Let me call the roll first. Lori G.
Here.
John Cutler.
Here.
Ed Mioshi.
Here.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Here.
Christopher Tamerlounis.
Here.
Richard Campbell.
Here.
And I'm John Eichman. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which is stand one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. The upcoming meeting dates for the planning board are as follows, March 30th, April 20th, and May 18th. First item on our agenda is Tucker subdivision. If we can call all the applicant forward and see if there are any changes that have been made since the last time it was presented at the last meeting, I'd appreciate it.
For Rich Renia for the applicants being promoted now.
Okay. Hello, Rich Renia with Renia Engineering. We have made some minor revisions due to the the snow cover. We have not been able to do our soil testing. The Health Department hasn't opened up for us to to do that yet. But we are expecting to have the surveyor stake out the the septics and the driveways later this week. So we're expecting to proceed with that sooner or hopefully soon. What we did do was we prepared a revised submission to address as many of the CPL comments that we could from Pete Sotero. And the the major changes were looking at the limit of disturbance and roughly each lot has about a or we're showing about a half an acre of disturbance. So it's a little over two acres of overall disturbance. So we will be with the final grading plans. We will be preparing a finally a basic SWIP to go in with the project as well.
Any board members or professionals have any questions? If not, we want to go ahead and try to set a public hearing for the project. A question would be whether March 30th or April 20th works the best, Rich?
We could, I always like to do it as soon as possible. So I'd say we go for the the earlier one.
It would require the process. Excuse me, it would require that you get everything done tomorrow, I believe, in order to meet the 21 day deadline.
As far as getting the the mailings?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we will. I guess what if we could schedule that, then I can have one of our people get to the town hall tomorrow to get the signs and we can get those placed. And we can, I don't think there's a lot of a large group of people to mail to. So I think we could probably get that done tomorrow.
Okay, then I can also just share with you the instructions for getting it in in a local newspaper as well, Rich.
Okay, that would be great. And is there a specific ad or a specific notice that needs to be mailed? I'm assuming that you'll give us that?
Correct. We have a sample notice we can give you.
Okay, all right, perfect.
Okay, with that, then I'll accept a motion to schedule a public hearing for the Tucker subdivision for March 30th, 2021.
So moved.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Do all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? All right, Carrie. Thank you, Rich. We'll see you on the 30th.
Okay, great. Thank you. Have a good night.
John, for purposes of the records, we just, I just want to make sure I caught who made the motion and who made the second.
Lori made the second and I think Ed made the motion.
I made the motion.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, Hopewell Senior Living.
I'm promoting Charlie Martabano and also Kathleen Gallagher from Insight Engineering. Okay. Charlie Martabano is the project attorney.
I also believe there Phil Greeley is here from our team as well as Don Petracola.
I'll promote them as well.
Beautiful. Thank you so much. Good evening. My name is Kathleen Gallagher. I'm with Insight Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture. I am joined tonight by the applicant, who also may be in the room as well, Anthony Sagretti, the traffic consultant, Phil Greeley of Colliers Engineering and Design, Don Petracola, the architect of LMB Architects, and Charles Martabano, the project's attorney.
Good evening, everyone.
I'm going to share my screen. Since the last time we were in front of the board, we've made several changes as a response to comments from the planning board, as well as comments made at the public hearings that were held on September 30th, October 21st, and December 8th of 2020. The public hearing was closed on December 8th, but in order to respond to the specific issues raised, the following items have been revised and are reflected upon our drawings. The drawings reflect a reduction in unit count from 90 units to 84 apartment units. As reflected on the drawings, that's a reduction of six units. That results in an equivalent reduction in traffic volume, an increase in overall available parking on site as the parking was not reduced, and a reduction of the massing of the building, particularly on the west side. This is the front entrance to the building. This is that west side that we are just talking about, and I'm going to zoom in on this bottom portion. Again, we have the front door and kind of that western area. So a reduction of the massing of the building. As you can see from the renderings, the architectural integrity remains intact, but the massing has been reduced to account for that reduction of six units. In addition, the town has decided not to utilize the residential dwelling that is currently on site. The applicant will keep the residence as part of the project, and instead it will be used as a caretaker's unit or for other Hopewell Senior Living needs. In addition, we had a very productive meeting with the Fire Advisory Board on March 2nd, where they requested several changes to the plans to increase fire safety. The applicant is happy to make those requested changes in support of what's a very important public service. Those changes will be reflected on a future amended plan. That concludes my review of the drawing updates. We believe this addresses the outstanding items from the town planning board and as well as from the public comments that were made. It is our understanding that the board is willing to entertain a discussion tonight related to a consideration of a decision.
And can I just ask, and I'm sorry, this is probably a really dumb question. I, the word that you used, the massing of the building, I didn't understand that.
Absolutely. So if we go back to the rendering and we look at kind of the full view, you can see that the eastern side of the building was, the building was symmetrical to begin with. So the eastern side was reflective on the western side as well, but you can see that the massing has actually roof line.
When you say massing, you mean it used to be three stories, now it's two stories, so that the you're reducing the profile of the building from the.
Yep, the physical volume of the building has been reduced and that's been reflected on, you know, lowering those roof lines in this western area.
I'm probably the only one that didn't understand what you meant, but I'm, I appreciate you explaining.
No worries.
Are there any other questions or comments from board members or from the professionals?
I'm sorry, one, one other quick question. There, I thought I saw some comments and forgive me if we've already addressed them, but the the eastern exit is still a right out only and no entrance. Was there any need to make that accessible for emergency vehicles as an ingress or did we cover all of that? Are those changes there?
Those changes are not reflected on that drawing, but we had that conversation with the Fire Advisory Board. And where we left it was we will add a mountable curb on the west side of the driveway in order to allow access in and out from that area. We're also going to provide a little sliver of stabilized material, stabilized lawn. So the fire, you know, department will know that it's there, but it won't be able to be seen by the road. And that will allow them to give them access. We'll also remove any obstruction signage from that area. And that's how we agreed to handle that exact situation.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So at what point will you, do you think you'll have a final plan with those changes that could be viewed?
Within the next couple of weeks.
So do we feel like that we would be premature and granting permission, any kind of permissions here without seeing that?
I think we can make that a condition of approval. We can add that to the resolution and state that the plans would be revised to reflect the comments from the fire. I assume it's the Fire Advisory Board or the Board of Fire Commissioners that made those comments?
The Fire Advisory Board.
Fire Advisory, okay. So we could, we could put a condition in. Do you have anything in writing with the comments, Kathleen, or was it just in the meeting basically?
It was just verbally in the meeting.
Okay.
Just to clarify, Michelle, that actually is condition number one in the resolution.
Exactly.
So I, I believe we'll have it covered when we get to the resolution.
Okay, we might have to be a little bit more specific as to what those comments were.
And then we have everything back, like all the DOT stuff came back and all those corrections were made.
So I guess Brendan, can you speak a little bit to the DOT and the and the sidewalk issue?
Yeah, I think that the DOT did respond to indicate that, you know, they didn't see the warrant for the sidewalks. We did ask the traffic, their, their traffic person to inquire, because I think someone, either the board or there was a recommendation or suggestion to, to look at the potential of putting a crosswalk at the main entrance across 82 for the, at least the beverage place that's on the other side of 82. My understanding from that and getting a response back from Phil Greeley is that the DOT will, will entertain that, but they'll entertain that in their, in their highway work permit process, you know, not right now.
And nothing as far as guard rails or anything on that 82 corridor, like, you know, around where the the depression pond is or any of that type of stuff?
So I could talk to that. This is Philip Greeley from Colliers Engineering and Design. Just one other thing to add to what Brendan said. We also had a take line meeting with New York State DOT to accommodate the potential of a future sidewalk along the site frontage. We are actually dedicating a strip of land to the state to accommodate both the widening, the road widening to develop the left turn lane at our entrance, which will also provide a short left turn lane into the beverage center. And then that land dedication would also be enough to accommodate the sidewalk. In terms of the guide rail, there are some guide rails that will have to be replaced along our side near the pond. The, the current plan is to grade that area appropriately where we would not have to install a guide rail. However, as part of the final DOT permit design, they will make that determination.
I seem to remember one of your, one of your earlier drawings had, had like a white fence across that area as well.
It still shows there.
Yeah. And that, that area, that would be maintained. It would be shifted back slightly because we're dedicating a strip of land to the state, and they don't want that in the right of way. So in, in concept, this is, you know, accurate, but that may shift slightly on the area that we're giving to the state.
Now, would that future sidewalk become an expense of the town? Or how would that work future?
Well, there's two things. In terms of right now, there are no current plans for sidewalks in this entire area. However, in the future, if that did change, and let's say DOT did a project here themselves to include sidewalks or some other future improvement, the land would be set aside for that to make that accommodation along our frontage. It wouldn't just be a sidewalk here. If there was a, you know, at some point in the future sidewalks along Route 82, all we would be doing is making sure that we would accommodate whatever was developed in the future.
But again, it would become a town expense or?
Or, or DOT expense. It, it, it would only be if the sidewalk project was, it wouldn't just be done along our frontage. It would be a sidewalk project throughout the, the whole corridor. And the benefit, you know, here would be if that ever did happen and DOT was to put in a sidewalk, they would have to likely acquire lands from other property owners to the, to the west or to the east of here. And if it ever did happen, they would not have to acquire property as part of their project.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments? If not, I'll proceed to a negative declaration. In order to expedite the process, I'm going to go ahead and summarize the details of the negative declaration and ask for a motion. Hey, John? Yes. I was on mute. I just unmuted. You couldn't hear me. I'm sorry. So this is Scott Bryant. Back to the sidewalk. I thought there was a contribution.
Yeah, Scott, it's Charlie Martabano. I, I think that is correct, but I think that someone was talking about a DOT project. If the town does a sidewalk project, we have agreed to make a contribution. We've, we've recorded that with the town. So I, I think it was some confusion about who was building the sidewalk. Was DOT building it? I think in the last exchange with Phil. You are correct that if there's talk that the town might build a sidewalk, we've agreed to make a contribution. So you are correct.
Okay, because as part of that is some maybe Richard or John or maybe even Phil mentioned, there's potentially going to be right away acquisition in advance of that. And my understanding was that those funds by the developer could be used to make those acquisitions in advance of the actual sidewalk being constructed.
Again, I don't think there's been a specific allocation, but we've provided for making the contribution. What the town's going to do with it, it's, it's a contribution we are making as part of the project. So however they do it, they do it.
Okay. And then back. Okay, back to the engineering. I know CPL has reviewed the SWIP. They're satisfied for the most part with the SWIP, other than maybe some minor tweaks. The pump station, we're working with Insight to finalize the pump station and the final route, that that's just something that'll be worked through along with the approval from the Health Department. Can anyone speak to the status with the Water and Waste Water Authority with regard to water and a water agreement?
I do not know the latest status of that. I can get you that information, but off the top of my head, I would have to consult with our engineers.
So I would imagine we have that as a condition that you have to finalize.
Correct.
And leave some, Scott.
Okay, and that design. I have a question. Brendan?
Yep.
With regard, they're going to take out a highway work permit, correct, for this left turn lane?
Correct.
Does the town have to endorse that permit or is that a standalone?
Um, so I mean, I think if the plan is, if the, you know, if the development and the plan become approved, then, you know, the other additional requirements that the DOT might have, that'll be a permit just, just between the applicant and, and the DOT.
Okay. And then as far as those highway work permits, do they have to bring, they bring a third party consultant in for the inspection, you know, maintenance, protection of traffic, et cetera? Can Insight do that or do they have to enlist a third party for that?
Well, I mean, there, there will be, you know, it'll be certainly a, you know, a major project and they'll have inspection requirements. Yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll need to identify someone. You know, whether it's Insight or, or someone else, you know, they would have to identify someone to be responsible for that and, and do all that reporting to the DOT and have someone on site while that work is taking place.
Do we have a hand in that or that's strictly between the developer and DOT?
Well, typically, Scott, the, sorry to interrupt you, Brendan.
That's okay.
Yeah, typically, so what happens is because this is a ma- major permit, they will require consultant inspection, which Insight has done this on other projects and would likely be the inspector on this. And or our firm, we also do it. And then as part of that permit, the pre-construction meeting, the town would be involved with that, including the emergency services, because there would be a work zone traffic control plan that would be initiated. So prior to the start of work, there would be a pre-construction meeting, which the town would be invited to and, you know, whatever agencies within the town. You know, typically we have emergency services at that meeting just to be up to speed and advance of starting the construction under the work permit.
Okay, I guess my concern and the point I wanted to raise is that, you know, when you're on your site doing your work, you're really not impacting the traveling public. But when you're doing that work on 84, I don't know, you know, what the schedule is and exactly the extent of the impact, but there will be an impact. So I just wanted to have some clarity as whether the town's involved, because it'll be the town that gets the phone calls. So whether our consultant, HVA, is going to have a thumbprint on it or who's going to have a thumbprint to make sure the signage is there, the work hours are there, and that we minimize disruption to, you know, traffic through that corridor while, while those improvements are being made.
Yeah, we, we would make sure. I mean, typically what we do is, and, and the DOT also involves the town in that. Part of this package would be a maintenance and protection traffic plan. Right now, the plan is to widen on one side of the road, keep the travel lanes functioning. Then, once the widening is done on the one side, we would shift to the opposite side so that we could keep the travel lanes open. Since we're widening to provide the left turn lane here, it would be, you know, easy to keep two lanes open and the hours of construction and if there are any lane closures would all be spelled out. And, you know, the, the town would be privy to that as part of the, the discussion and, and input on it too.
Okay. And, and all your proposed work falls within the DOT right of way or your portion or your parcel that you're going to dedicate to DOT?
That's correct.
There's no other right of way acquisition that's required?
That's correct.
Okay.
So Scott, the, the DOT will also assign an inspector, a permit inspector to the project. He won't be on this, you know, whoever it is, he or she will not be on the site daily, but they keep track of everything. Certainly we can, you know, give them notice that the town would like to stay abreast of, of, of things and, and, and keep that communication open during the course of any work.
Okay, okay. I think that satisfies, you know, the major engineering questions.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, and with, without any objection, I will, as I mentioned, present a, an abbreviated version of the negative declaration. This name of the action is Hopewell Senior Living. Description of the action is the proposed action would result in the construction of 84 senior independent housing units and associated parking on a 9.57 acre parcel. The existing historic home on the parcel will be converted to a community space. The seeker's status is unlisted. Following documentation was analyzed in making this negative declaration, a full EAF, traffic study, stormwater pollution prevention plan, and some other documents. The environmental issues that were identified as relevant include the following. Land use, zoning and public policy. Number two, natural resources. Number three, surface water and wetlands. Number four, stormwater. Number five, transportation. Regarding land use zoning and public policy, it was found that the proposed project meets all site plan review standards set forth on the town zoning law. The project is consistent with stated public policy goals enumerated in the Town of East Fishkill's comprehensive plan. Accordingly, the planning board finds that no significant adverse environmental impacts related to land use, zoning and public policy are anticipated from the project. Number two, natural resources. A number of measures been taken to protect endangered species. With those measures in place, the planning board finds the proposed project will not result in any significant impacts to threatened or endangered species or natural resources. Number three, surface waters and wetlands. No disturbances proposed within the wetland. And the minor disturbance to the adjacent area will require a permit from New York State DEC, but will not be expected to result in any significant adverse impacts to surface waters or wetlands on the site. Stormwater. The proposed project will not result in any significant adverse stormwater impacts. Transportation. With the construction of the proposed separate left turn lane at the project entrance, the Hopewell Senior Living Development Traffic is not expected to cause any significant impact to overall traffic operations in the area. Therefore, the proposed project will not have any significant adverse impacts to transportation. And finally, other, there are no other significant potential impacts identified. With that, I'll accept a motion to approve the neg deck.
So moved.
Lori, and a second from?
Second.
From Richard.
I apologize for interrupting. I just think you might want to make one small correction. It's in the heading. As was mentioned, the town decided not to use the house as a community space for the town. We said we would convert it to a caretaker cottage or Hopewell Senior Living Community Space. If we could just make that correction under the description of action, then everything will be fine. It's, the rest of it conforms to it.
Now, the existing historic home will be, could you please go through that one more time for me?
Yes, sir. Will be converted to a caretaker residence or Hopewell Senior Living Community Space.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for making that correction. So with, with that adjustment to the negative declaration, Lori G has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Richard and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It carries. I'm going to do the same thing for the resolution because it's rather lengthy. So I will present a, an abbreviated version of this. A full version of both of these documents is obviously available in the planning office should anybody want to review them. Resolution of special permit, wetland permit, excavation permit and site plan approval. Name of the site plan is Hopewell Senior Living. Name of applicant, Hopewell Village Green, Inc. Location, 672 New York State Highway Route 82, Hopewell Junction, New York. I'm going to skip most of the wherayses. However, the where it, the proposed project includes a three-story senior living apartment project proposed to consist of 84 senior living units, 150 parking spaces, stormwater management practices and associated site amenities. The proposed project meets the conditions of the senior independent living apartment complex's special permit, 194-67.4 of East Fishkill zoning code. And the planning board held public hearings for the proposed project on September 30th, 2020, October 21st, 2020, and December 8th, 2020 for consideration of granting of a special permit under 194-67.4 of the East Fishkill zoning code and site plan approval. And whereas the action is considered an unlisted action under seeker and we're And whereas the action is considered an unlisted action under seeker, and whereas a negative declaration was adopted by the planning board on March ninth, twenty twenty-one, and the terms and conditions of such negative declaration are incorporated by, incorporated by reference herein, now therefore be it resolved that the planning board approves the special permit, wetland permit, excavation permit and site plan for the site plan titled Hopewell Senior Living, prepared by Inside Engineering Survey and Landscape Architecture PC, dated seven thirty-one twenty and last revised one twenty-seven twenty-one, and to be further revised as provided for herein with the following conditions. And these are the conditions. Number one, the site plan shall be revised to reflect the modifications that the applicant has agreed to make as a consequence of discussions with, that they had with fire advisory board at their meeting of March second, twenty twenty-one. The site plan shall be revised to reflect site access as approved by the New York State Department of Transportation. Number three, dedication of the pump station and force main to the town. The details of the pump station enforcement will be reviewed separately in a memo issued. Number four, granting of an easement to the town to provide access to the pump station and the pump station area. Number five, extension of the water connection from Fishkill Road to project side inclusive, inclusive of any appurtenances required by Duchess County Wastewater Authority, Duchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health and the town engineer. The applicant will reimburse the town twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty cents for its cost to extend the water line beneath Fishkill Road. Number six, the site plan shall be revised to show sewer easements area with meets and bounds. Number seven, the applicant shall donate land area along the frontage of the property acceptable to New York State DOT that would accommodate required road improvements and set aside area for a future sidewalk within the Route eighty-two right of way. Number eight, the applicant shall provide a contribution in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for the construction of a sidewalk, said some to be payable one year after the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. Number nine, the applicant shall provide a recreation fee in the amount of one thousand dollars per unit, uh, which is equal to eighty-four thousand dollars. Number ten, an escrow in the amount of seven thousand, five hundred dollars to be replenished as needed for an environmental mon- monitor for the duration of onsite construction activities related to stormwater management, erosion control and threatened and endangered species. Are there any additional or changes to the conditions? If not, then be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
John, I'm sorry, hold up. Michelle, did we want to adjust that first condition to be more specific, or do we want to? Is it?
I mean, I think.
Saying a discussion, it doesn't actually articulate the FAB requirements.
Yeah, I mean, I, because we don't have anything written, it would be great if we could just have a, a, um, a discussion really, or just bulleted points about what those things were.
Absolutely. So do you want me to run through verbally?
That would be great Kathleen, and I'll, I'll take notes here.
Perfect. So we discussed the mountable curb, uh, basically just minor alterations to the, you know, driveway, the right exit driveway, including a mountable curb, uh, removing any obstructions and an additional stabilized surface for access. We also talked about adjusting the drop off area at the main entrance in order to bring the driveway closer to the existing building. So basically, we're going to stretch the entrance, um, so that you enter earlier and exit earlier in order to bring these driveways a little closer for access. And the last one was to increase the water service line from a six inch to an eight inch for the water surface, um, within the property, extending and entering into the building. It's currently noted as a six and they requested that it be an eight.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions on those bulleted items regarding that? If not, then I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Very good. Was that Richard with the motion and Lori is the second?
No, it was me.
I'm sorry. Was that Chris?
No. No, it, it was John.
John Cutler.
Ah, come on now. Come on. I may, you may not be able to see me, but I know you can hear me.
So John, John Cutler made a motion, Lori G second. Thank you very much. I will, uh, do a roll vote. Uh, Board Member Lori G.
Aye.
Board Member John Cutler.
Aye.
Board Member Ed Miyoshi.
Aye.
Board Member Sarah Bledsoe.
Having missed the public hearings and not having been part of the board for that, I'm going to abstain from voting on this.
Okay. Sarah Bledsoe stains. Board Member Christopher Kamalonis.
Aye.
And Board Member Richard Campbell.
Aye.
And John Eichman is aye. Okay, carries.
Thank you all very much. We really appreciate it and stay safe.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Night. So our next item on the agenda is an adjourned public hearing for Stone Ridge Commons. Um, I believe, um, we have the applicant's representative here who has some things to present in terms of changes, uh, clarifications since the last presentation. So I'll promote now, uh, the attorney Rick O'Rourke. Rick is muted.
I'm unmuted.
We can hear you.
I think you're fine now, Rick.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening. Um, uh, my name is Richard O'Rourke. I am a partner with the law firm of Keenan Bean, PC. We have offices located in Fishkill, White Plains and New York City. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. With me tonight, uh, is Kevin Lund, who's president of KBL Corporation. He is the developer and the applicant. His office is located in Wapton Falls. Also, Amy Bombadere, who is, uh, with the engineering firm of Day and St- Saccosa, also in Wapton Falls is with me tonight. Uh, there have been some, uh, substantial changes, we believe, that were, uh, incorporated into the proposal based upon the comments received and the efforts to try to further mitigate to the maximum extent practicable, uh, all of the, uh, impacts that have been identified. And I thought, Mr. Chairman, what might be the best way to proceed is to go through the comments that were received earlier at the public hearing, uh, what we've done by way of response, and we certainly can, uh, put up an elevation that incorporates some of the, um, actually, I, I believe just about all of the, um, um, additional measures that we, uh, think are responsive. So, uh, if Mike, is there a way Amy can, uh, share a screen and put something up?
Yes, she did.
Will we do that? Did, did we reopen the public hearing?
Oh. Good point.
But before, before we reopen the public hearing, I just also want the, the, um, the board needs to make a motion to, um, declare themselves lead agency. Okay?
Okay, so may I have a motion to declare for our intent to declare, no, not intent to actually declare the lead agency?
Correct, correct.
Hey Lori? And a second from?
I think I made the second, John.
I'm sorry, did you get that, Michelle? The, the motion and the second?
I got the second, but I didn't get the motion. Sorry. It went out.
Right here.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, carries. And, uh, now I'll accept a motion to open the, reopen the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And Michelle, did you get?
Yes, got that. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, please proceed, Richard.
All right. Thank you very much. And, um, so if I may, I'll, I'll like to highlight, uh, go through, um, our response to the comments, and then I think through that we'll be able to incorporate some of the additional mitigation measures that, uh, uh, we now propose. So one of the first comments and one that's always been important, I know because of some of the neighborhoods nearby, has to do with the stormwater runoff and the drainage. And I think it's important to pu- point out that there is a dramatic change in runoff pre, uh, from existing conditions to what it will be once developed. And the stormwater is going to be managed in three, um, you know, three practices. There's going to be an infiltration basin that's proposed at the rear, the north side of parcel twenty-three. Um, in addition to that, that there will be, um, a piped network of proposed infiltration that will ultimately drain to an existing pond on the southwest corner of the parcel, which is adjacent to the Central Hudson and the railroad parcel. So that is something that will be, um, uh, incorporated into the design. Uh, as far as, uh, describing any additional tree removal that will occur on site, it's very minimal tree removal. Most of the vegetation has been removed previously. Um, but there is a plan that has been, um, submitted by letter dated November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, which demonstrates and shows, uh, what that proposal is. Um, now, uh, Amy, could you, uh, describe, obviously you're showing the parcels, but I just want to make sure that there's an understanding of, uh, the, the limited tree removal that we're proposing. There's a lot of brush that's being removed, but could you describe that for us?
It's, it's overgrowth from, from being previously cleared and then untouched for a number of years. There's no substantial trees being removed.
Okay, all right. I know the town engineers requested updated soil tests, uh, and my understanding is that the soil tests were updated and the SWIP has been updated as a result as well. Uh, a question that was raised was how long will the construction last? What are the proposed construction hours? It is anticipated and expected that, uh, there, there will be approximately an eighteen month period of construction. Uh, the construction will occur in a full accordance with the town code, uh, which is that construction work will not be allowed between the hours of nine PM and seven AM, Monday through Friday, or before eight AM or after nine PM on Saturday, or between the hours of twelve oh one AM and eleven fifteen, nine PM on a, any Sunday or recognized holiday. Um, there's been a, a, a project sequence and erosion, uh, control plan has been submitted. Uh, as far as the, uh, uh, request regarding an environmental monitor or a community appointed liaison, I think it's important to point out that Mr. Lund uh, is a, pretty much a lifelong resident. His office is nearby. Uh, he's got a phone number. He has, uh, uh, committed to be as responsive as possible, uh, to, uh, any calls, and that would be from any member of, of the community and particularly any of the neighbors. The, um, environmental monitor, one of the objects of, of construction being done properly is that there are also, and always are, uh, periodic inspections that are done by, uh, the engineering staff of the town, by other regulatory agencies. Uh, we feel that on a construction, uh, of this size, that the, uh, the monitoring that occurs through the regulatory process will be sufficient, as it has been in the past, uh, to make sure that it is done properly. So I think that's an important consideration as well. One of the things that was discussed, uh, and commented on was the recommendation of a proposed sidewalk, uh, to John Jay High School. The, the developer, uh, applicant, engineering staff has worked uh, and is collaborating with the town as well as with DOT to try to develop a sidewalk that meets or exceeds all of the regu- the required standards. So that's still in the works. Uh, and we're, uh, we're optimistic that we're going, going to be able to, uh, develop, uh, an appropriate sidewalk. Uh, as far as the, um, um, traffic engineer review and the traffic study to make sure the applicant addresses potential traffic growth related to the development of I Park and, uh, the additional, uh, traffic, uh, that will be generated through the Amazon project. Uh, I served as counsel to the Amazon project, so I'm well familiar with the mitigation measures that are being and, uh, proposed. As you may know, construction has started already, uh, with respect to the, the project. Uh, Auditorium Drive is going to be improved and dedicated as a road, which of course will, from Route fifty-two, proceeds southbound, will tie into South Drive and I Park Boulevard, exiting on Limekiln Road. And so that traffic mitigation measure will obviously, um, uh, significantly ameliorate any traffic, uh, that, uh, is existing presently. Uh, in addition to that, and I know, uh, Michelle Robbins is well familiar with this as well. Uh, ongoing discussions and plans are for there to be a roundabout that will be constructed. I don't want to misstate, uh, uh, exactly where the location will be or what its extent might be. Michelle, perhaps you could share what the plan is in that regard so that, uh, folks understand what that's all about.
Sure. Go ahead, Scott.
Michelle, do you want to have Brendan speak to that though?
Yeah, that would be great. Yeah.
That's great. Yeah, whoever. Yeah, that's fine. That's great, Scott.
Okay, uh, thanks. This is Brendan. Um, yeah, so right now, as, as you indicated, uh, the, the town is working with, um, you, you know, with, with a group of those developers, uh, and the, the state and the county and everyone to, uh, create this, this bypass, um, from fifty-two, uh, basically to, to eighty-four, um, which will help alleviate some of the heavier traffic at the intersections at John Jay High School, at Palin and Limekiln and fifty-two. Um, as part of that, to have a, a, a fully functional, uh, intersection on fifty-two, uh, the concept right now is to develop a modern roundabout at the intersection of Auditorium Drive and fifty-two. Um, that is, you know, the, the road that's going to be, uh, dedicated to the town to be utilized as, as the bypass. So, you know, thus it, uh, it, it's the logical location to put, uh, a, a, a fully functional intersection at. Um, so, you know, that, that, uh, you know, that, that's going to be an improvement that, uh, you know, will, uh, you, you know, serve to mitigate, uh, you know, traffic concerns within this corridor, um, from a variety of developments, not just Stone Ridge.
Thank you. Um, I think it's important also to point out that, uh, and it's all part of the record that with regard to the proposed development volumes, there's a table that was submitted, and it, it states the numbers, uh, as set forth in the, um, based upon the documents that are on file, and that is that with respect to the previously approved plan for this property, which was a bank driveway and medical office driveway volumes, um, uh, the, there was a total approval before, which anticipated that there would be, uh, at peak hour AM, approximately eighty-six vehicles. And that with regard to peak, uh, PM hour, there would be approximately a hundred and thirty-four vehicles. With the proposed fifty-one unit multifamily housing, the driveway volumes are anticipated to be such that there will be a minus sixty-eight number of traffic trips out of this property with this proposed housing development, in contrast to what was previously proposed.
Uh, but, but wouldn't there be more, more traffic during, uh, you know, times when people are going to and from work from the, from these apartments?
Well, the, these are studies that were conducted based upon the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual.
No, I, I, I get that if there's two businesses there, there's going to be traffic coming in and out all day during the course of the day. Most of it is probably going to miss the, the peak traffic periods of say like, you know, seven to eight-thirty in the morning, uh, or, you know, going at night from like four-thirty to six. Um, that's where the peak, in my opinion, is going to be for the housing rather, rather than scattered through the day. So yeah, I understand there's less trips, but I, I think there may be more trips during, uh, the, the peak hours.
Well, um, I'm, I'm. Well, uh I'm I'm referring to a a table which um of course uh has been submitted and during peak weekday P M hour uh based upon the calculations approved by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And I'm no transportation engineer. I'm just looking at this chart, which is in the record. And the net additional driveway volumes, um the total it there's a reduction of one hundred and eleven. Now, maybe Brendan can uh expound about upon this. Again, I'm not a traffic engineer, but but that's the tables. Those are the tables that were developed and were submitted as part of the application. So.
Right. I think I I think the point to make here uh or to understand is that you know, the the intensity of the development and the amount of total uh you know, traffic generation and and peak hour traffic generation i- is is significantly less uh with the with the residential use than it was uh for the office use. I think you're correct, uh the board member in saying that, you know, uh there there might be uh some earlier traffic in the residential development that you wouldn't see, obviously, because businesses wouldn't be opening until, you know, probably at least after eight and probably most of that traffic would be, you know, anticipated in the in the nine A M hour. Um but again, it's it's been significantly reduced. I think the A M uh the A M peak uh uh if you look at that table, I I can't read it on my screen, but I I know it's, uh let me see. It's uh yeah, it's only it's a total of only uh eighteen vehicles in that A M peak. Uh which you know, which again, still be s- spread throughout, you know, or anticipated to be sp- spread throughout those uh that A M peak hour. So I think, you know, again, just the the big takeaway is, uh you know, in terms of total traffic generation for the 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 peak hours and total traffic, it's 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 a lot less than what was what was previously proposed here.
Thank you. Um the uh as far as the uh uh the location of the uh the driveways uh on Palin drove and Route fifty-two, uh those those road cuts and locations were previously approved by the county and and the state D O T uh based upon those higher traffic volumes. So um so obviously, that's the basis of why uh they are where they are presently located. Um so another comment was confirm the plan show curving at Pa- Palin Road entrance will be constructed, prevent left-hand turns into the site. Will these be mountable curves? Uh the answers, the answer is the curves are not mountable. The turning of fire trucks can be accommodated without the curb being mounted. The turning movements are depicted on uh sheet C five of the plan set that have been uh submitted to the uh the planning board. Uh review the number of parking spaces. It was suggested the current number of spaces would not be sufficient to accommodate the number of residents and visitors. The plan has been revised to show one hundred and five total spaces proposed, five of which are ADA accessible and the minimum required um uh based upon code is eighty-nine. So we have uh an additional sixteen visitors overflow parking spaces above that which is uh required. The uh uh another question was can there be additional parking to be provided on the site? The answer is there there's room to land back an additional seven spaces at the northwest parking area if uh at some point it's deemed that 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 should be added. Um question was snow removal areas on the plan. Yes, there's two. Ones off the northwest parking area, one off the entrance from Palin. The total area is four thousand two hundred and sixty square feet and it would and the proposed snow areas would not take up any of the parking spaces. A left turn from the site onto Palin Road requires crossing three lanes of traffic and is dangerous. Can these left turns be restricted? Um the the department, uh the the county uh has already approved uh the left-hand turning movement, so they've examined that that very issue. Uh so. Another question was uh with respect to the school district and um potential student enrollment. Uh what we've done, uh we have attached a lot of correspondence, but we have the Wapageers Central School District enrollment projections for two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-six. We also included as part of the submission, the um information from a study by Rutgers University. And we also, and the board may be well aware of, um and I'm former corporate secretary for Pattern for Progress, which incorporates the nine counties in the lower Hudson Valley. We did a report out of alignment and um there is there is destined to be by different sources and experts uh a drop in enrollment that will uh will uh be continuing for some time. So uh that information was uh shared. And um the information has also been shared with the Board of Education and Administration. And those are the, some of the enrollment projections uh demonstrating uh year by year, uh class by class, what the projections are through two thousand twenty-six and two thousand twenty-seven. So. The objections were raised as to the use of Stone Ridge subdivision cul-de-sac as a bus stop location. Concerns were raised, the parents would park in a cul- cul-de-sac to wait for buses causing congestion, noise, disturbance to the residents. What has been proposed is the following, and Amy, maybe you can put up the elevation that demonstrates the um the change in plan. On the property of the development, there is proposed a bus shelter at the end of the cul-de-sac on the property of of the proposal. In addition to that, there are additional parking spots put uh in proximity to the uh the bus shelter so that even in cold weather, uh parents uh can have their children sit in the cars and not be uh in the cold. And then, of course, we have the bus shelter that's on our property as well. That location and the rea- reason for that is because it is the school district that has, after correspondence with the supervisor of transportation for the school district, uh with the business office uh and with other uh uh people with the school district, that is proposed to be the location. We didn't necessarily choose that. They're saying to us that that would be where that location would be. So regardless of whether apartments or townhouses, if there's any residential development, that's where the the school district is going to say the children should be picked up. Um and we've made every accommodation so as to not have any cars parked in the cul-de-sac by any of the people that reside in the apartments. So that's the that's the stated position of the school district. As far as the anticipated tax revenue for the town and school district from the proposal. I spoke, I left with my partner today who uh has handled and does a lot of work in terms of of tax evaluation and analysis. And what's important to realize is that when you're dealing with an apartment complex, the the stated policy and procedure in terms of valuation is done based upon um information that's generated based upon the uh the occupancy and the projected rentals of the property. Uh you have to build into that a reasonable vacancy um element. However, knowing what we know in terms of uh the paucity of good quality rental properties, there's not probably going to be very much here. You then take out the expenses, you come up with the net operating income, and then the tax assessor makes an assessment based upon uh all of those factors. That's the proven method of an approach to um to uh how the taxes are generated. As far as the the number of children that are that are uh anticipated, again, we relied on expert uh analysis and uh that information has also already been shared with the board. The uh, let's see. The recreation fees that would be collected for the pros- proposed project based upon the town of East Fish kills uh fee schedule presently, that uh will be a total of two hundred and four thousand dollars. The uh there were questions regarding ownership. Is there uh can there be lease terms? Be restricted to not less than one-year leases? That is the intention of the of the uh owner of the property and the builder of these apartments. Uh in anticipation of what is going to be developed nearby, uh we fully believe that um that there's not going to be a problem in terms of rental um uh with uh mid-level executives and others that may be coming in from Amazon. Uh it's not exactly I B M I've been moved, but uh but nevertheless, uh there's there's a, Amazon is growing so exponentially uh that we'd we'd fully anticipate we'll have people uh from Amazon there. There was a um several comments suggested the individual owners would have more care with the site and it would be less concern from current residents if the project was made condominiums instead of rentals. The applicant considered the condominiums rather than market uh rate rentals. He did consider that. Uh he made a business decision uh which he's entitled to make, and he believes that this is uh the project that he wants to meet his development objectives. The question was raised, will the proposed project allow section eight housing? There is no way subsidized vouching, housing vouchers are going to cover the rent of these units. If you take a look at the quality of the architecture, the quality of this development, this is something that is not going to be something that um would be payable through section eight vouchers. Now, can the proposed project guarantee that section eight housing would be prohibited? Absolutely not. As a matter of law, you could not do that. But nevertheless, because of the way we're building this and the and the and the um the quality of the construction, there's, we just cannot anticipate that ever occurring. Uh can the applicant provide renderings of the proposed landscaping from the Stone Ridge subdivision? Uh the rendering should include a view as installed and a view that is several years out from install. I believe that the elevation you have before you uh shows the uh landscaping plan, which I know will be an extremely important component to uh the uh site plan approval. Uh I believe that the developer has already committed to increase the size of the trees when planted and obviously is going to use and utilize what we believe to be a very thorough screening. Um and I don't know, Amy, whether we can um explain further in terms of what it is we're making by way of of the change of of landscaping.
We showed a tightly planted berm of Arbor Whitey along the northern property line. So they'll be fourteen feet at the time of planting. The green giants typically grow three to five feet per year. So this would be the, it would be bermed up to raise the elevation and then plantings would be installed within the berm. And that would provide line of sight of obstruction from the home to the north to the building. It will also provide noise reduction from Route fifty-two and from the parking area for Stone Ridge Commons.
Another question was asked, what about allowing dogs at the apartment complex? Um dogs and pets will be allowed for an additional fee. There probably will be a um a restriction, as you sometimes find in terms of the size of the animals, the poundage. Uh obviously, it's something that is an enforcement issue, which uh the landlord uh will take into uh consideration in terms of rental and making sure that it's abided by. Uh there are sidewalks that are throughout the site, so there will be a pet addendum to to the leases for um the apartments. Uh a question was can the town restrict parking on the cul-de-sac? We have to defer to the town on that. That we 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 don't uh have the um authority to do anything like that. But because of the mitigation measures that we're employing, uh we don't see how or why uh there would be anyone driving around to get to the cul-de-sac from this complex. Uh the other thing that I think there may have been some misunderstanding, this is not, this is gated. This is not a true thoroughfare. There is no intention to make this a a through thoroughfare. And obviously, I know that will certainly be a condition of of any approval that's granted. Finally, I'm getting to the the end, but I did want to try to be as responsive as we could to the comments. How will the proposed project impact the property values of the neighboring properties? It was suggested the applicant contact the town assesses to determine if an evaluation could be provided uh be provided. What we've done, and as part of the record, we we provided to the town the report that was prepared by the Urban Land Institute, which is the preeminent organization with respect to planning. And it was a report, it was a uh an analysis that was done that also uh addressed the issue of of property valuation. And copy of the report, this is uh I'll I'll hold it up. I don't know whether anybody can see it, but it's part of the record and the title of it is Higher Density Development Myth and Fact. Uh and as I said, this was done by the Urban Land Institute. And this is based upon their analysis of this. And one of the myths, it says higher density development overburdens public schools and other public services and requires more infrastructure support systems. The fact, according to the U L I, is the nature of who lives in higher density housing. Fewer families with children, it puts less demand on schools and other public services than lower density housing. Moreover, the compact nature of higher density development requires less extensive infrastructure to support it. Next, myth. Higher density development, lower property values in surrounding areas. Fact, as stated by the Urban Land Institute. No discernible difference exists in the appreciation rate of properties located near higher density development than those that are not. Some of the research even shows that higher density development can increase property values. This is by the Urban Land Institute. This is not anything other than that. Myth, higher density development creates more regional traffic congestion and parking problems than low-density development. Fact, higher density development generates less traffic than lower density development per unit. It makes walking and public transit more feasible and creates opportunities for shared park. Myth, higher density development leads to higher crime rates. Fact, the crime rates at higher density developments are not significantly different from those at lower density development. Myth, higher density development is unattractive and does not fit in a lower-density community. Fact, attractive, well-designed and well-maintained higher-density development attracts good residents and tenants and fits into existing communities. Myth, no one in suburban areas wants higher density development. Fact, our population is changing and becoming increasingly diverse. Many of these households now prefer higher-density housing. One of the things that was developed through uh Pattern for Progress was a a program entitled Out of Alignment and Abstract, and this was prepared last year. It's available on a website of Pattern for Progress, which many of you are probably familiar with. It's a planning think tank, nonpartisan, non-political organization. And one of the stunning stunning statistics that's been developed is what is happening in Duchess County, and that's this. That with respect to those age fifty-five and over, as a percentage of the total county population in Duchess County, it is anticipated that the, while in two thousand, twenty-one percent of the population was fifty-five years of age or older, two thousand seventeen it was thirty percent, but by two thousand thirty, it's going to thirty-seven percent. And one of the things that Pattern for Progress discerned was that those people, the elderly or the aged population, many of them are downsizing, they're selling their their homes and they're looking for alternative places to live nearby because of family, grandchildren, children, whatever. And one of the things that was also discovered was that what's out of alignment is that the traditional single-family home on one single-family home on one, two, three acres is not something that will continue. Because the demand and the population is changing. So, you know, that's one of the facts that I think is very important. You have to retain age groups that, that want to remain in, in, in the community. Can restrictions be placed on a proposed terraces and balconies prevent unsightly items being stored and displayed? Yes. The restrictions will be stipulated in the lease and renters will be subject to fines if violations occur. Those of you that are familiar with Marriott timeshares, though, you can hang towels out at the Grand Ocean down Hilton Head or Ocean View and Myrtle Beach, you, you, you'll get yourself in trouble. Same thing is going to happen here. A question was asked about why the project has changed so much from the previously approved project. The zoning was adopted by the town. This is a use that's permitted as of right and also by special permit if the standards are met. That's, this is not a legislative change. We're not looking for any zoning amendments. We're not looking for any zoning change. So. So, you know, in, in, in response to the comments that were made, we tried to encapsulate and address as many of them as we possibly could. And I think that the only last thing that I would point out was that the the Waptonshire Central School District enrollment projections are, are stating that they anticipate a steady decrease in, for the entire period from two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty-seven. So. The question in terms of burden on the school district is based upon the statistics and the analysis of those that are far more expert than I. Where they're coming out is that the enrollments are going to drop. So. We wanted to be as fully responsive. I think we have been. We're trying to mitigate, ameliorate and be responsive. And what we're showing by way of this elevation, I think, shows an incorporation of, of elements that truly do mitigate, mitigate the, the impacts that we have. So. There you have it.
Thank you, Richard. Do any of our board members or professionals have some questions for Richard before we open up to comments by the public?
Did have a one question as an overview. How is the refuse going to be managed like other, you know, garbage bin areas and stuff like that? I didn't see those on the original.
Go ahead.
We have, we have two refuse enclosure areas. One is here, so it's in close proximity to building two, and the other is here in close proximity to building one. And the traffic movement shows that the garbage trucks can accommodate and back out onto the main roads.
Where was the second one? Can you show that to me?
Here.
And where is that relation to the bus stop? So the bus stop's a little more to the left. Okay. I was just curious. Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you.
If I may add one, the last comment, and that's this, that insofar as the other requirements of, of the B one A district dimensional requirements. We, we are, we are in total compliance, in fact exceed the setback requirements in, in, in many areas. And as far as coverage is concerned, I believe that we are far below what, again, what the dimensional issues are as set forth in the code. So it's not like we're maxing it out to the maximum.
Amy, I have a couple of questions for you. Can you bring that landscape plan up again, that overhead view with the side view? So I'm, I guess I'm a little bit confused by this because when I look at the site plan you just had in front of us. It looked like the parking lot was right up against the property line, very close to the property line on the west side. And it, it also looks like you're showing a very dead tree line for the house. Are you, is that landscape that's already existing or are you proposing to build landscaping on another property owner's lot?
No, I'm not proposing it on another property owner's lot. Here is the row of Arbor Vitis.
Okay.
Here's, here's the limit of the parking. And this line is the property line.
Okay.
At the property line, it's near the property line, but it's not on the property line. And the reason that it is that close is because we're trying to berm it up so to raise the grade. It needs to, the trees are closer to the property line so that I could make existing grade. We can also stagger the trees so that they're not so tightly next to each other and then
That was going to be my next question. Does it make better sense to stagger them just so we get better coverage? On the other side.
But sorry. What? But.
I was going to ask you a question on the other side. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I'm sorry.
Okay. Go ahead.
So same question here, where are the trees above the pond that I'm seeing on the plan here? Above, to the north, those are offset. So those are, those are currently on the site?
Those are existing, not on our parcel.
Okay. Okay. And did you have, so this to me looks like it's a fairly, it looks like the mature version of the drawing. Did you have the kind of as-installed version? Because it'll take a few years to get here, right? I know you're saying they grow very quickly, but I, I don't think they'll look like that.
They're going to be fourteen feet when they are planted. And they're going to be
Part or four, you're not saying they're going to be fourteen feet high, or are they?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, Mr. Lund has made that commitment. And obviously, there's, there's going to be a berm, so obviously, the trees are fourteen feet in height and the berm, of course, will elevate them even further.
Okay. And then this view that you have for the, from the building to the, through, across the parking to the jury, which, which building is that? Is that the west building or the east building?
That is the west building. That's, sorry.
Okay. Do we have something similar to the eastern, for, for the eastern side building to the, the other house? Or is the other house already protected by the existing trees?
The other house is, is substantially higher in elevation than this development. And there is a fair amount of trees in between. Granted, they are deciduous, but there is, it's we're not disturbing anything between the house and the property line, obviously, so.
So that was going to be my next question, like, do we, do, do do you think because they're deciduous that there should also be an Arbor Viti line across that that similar area above the pond? Above, I mean, again, to the north of the pond.
That house, that, I know, that house is so much higher that anything we planted would be it might be thirty feet higher to, than where the
It is a substantial grade change where that house is. It's way up on a hill.
If we were to plant anything, it would have to be extremely high to do any kind of meaning.
Okay.
Your comment, Laurie, about moving the Arbor Vitis as opposed to a parallel line. If there's a way in which we can do that, I understand the point because that, that creates a better density. And perhaps we can take a look at that.
Yeah. And I know they go broke quickly. I'm familiar with that, that. I don't know if it's a tree or a plant, but that plant. The green giant.
The issue would be too, though, that you have a berm. So I don't know how wide you would have that berm from front to back.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Dagger, so. It'd be, I, I don't know, you know, we don't have a measurement of the exact distances from the actual end of the parking lot there to the property line. So I'm sure they could be adjusted a bit, but that berm would have to be taken into consideration as to how they would do that.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And then is it, and this is maybe a question for Michelle. And I trust, you know, Richard, if they can't stagger them because the berm isn't wide enough or they can't make a berm wide enough, that, that's, that's fine. But is there a, a standard clause for develop site plans like this that if some of the foliage dies off, that it has to be replaced in a certain amount of time or anything like that? Because again, when you're planting on a berm, you, you do run a little bit of a risk there. I think with fourteen-foot trees, they're probably digging down deep enough that they shouldn't have too much trouble, but I just want to make sure there's a replacement expectation in the event that some of this dies off.
So yes, Laurie, we've had that as a condition on previous applications.
Okay. The other question I had, and I apologize, Richard, if you already answered it, but I, I think one of the other questions we heard during the public hearing was the original commercial buildings, there was a condition that they needed to be similar in appearance to the buildings in the neighborhood. So this apartment building looks very different, right? It's a very modern kind of view. It's very different from the homes that'll be behind it. Was there any consideration given to updating the facade to look a little bit more residential on the backside of the building that faces those residences? I know that I'm saying something that may not be easy, but I'm just asking if there was a consideration made because I know that was in the original, I believe it was in the original commercial development plan.
I, I'd have to defer to, I, I, I cannot answer that question. I, I don't know. I would think so, but I don't know. I don't know.
I, I just want to point out, we already have our, yeah, we have architectural review. We've got their approval. It was in my submission.
Okay.
So these, these, these buildings have been reviewed by the Architectural Review Board. They have approved it. It was included, their approval was included in with my submission. So you have that on file.
I, I get that they approved it. I'm asking you the question about the nature and character of the neighborhood versus these buildings and if there was consideration to keep them in the, in a similar kind of look and feel, because this looks very different, right? I'm not saying it looks bad, but I'm saying it looks very different.
It looks different, but if it was a commercial building, it would look different. I don't, I mean.
I, I
Architectural Review Board is, is your approval for architectural buildings, correct?
So the planning board is the building.
The planning board, the architecture council's advisory at this stage.
Right, so advisory.
I, I'm just saying, it was a question that was raised at the last public hearing. I didn't hear it addressed. I just wondered if we had it, if you had a, a comment regarding that. If there was consideration given there, if there's a reason the building is like, is if it's a space thing, if it's a energy efficiency thing, I, I'm asking the question.
I don't think that they did. Because of the way it was received at the Architectural Review Board, I don't think that there was a consideration given to changing the facade.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that it's completely out of the question.
Okay. I, I think the original plan had, did not have the kind of screening that you're currently proposing, so I'm probably less worried about that, but I, I do think it was something that we, we asked to be considered. So I, that's why I'm asking the question.
I, I mean, if we change the the facade of the, the materials and the colors, is that something, is that what you're looking for?
I'm not necessarily asking you to change anything. I just wanted to, I, I was asking the question if this was, if you consider the appearance of the neighborhood that is visible to it when built, when choosing these materials and choosing this, this appearance.
I also want to point out that the, we, we've provided screening on the balconies here. That was a comment from a neighbor. There's additional, I don't know if you can make it out. We have two options for screening on the backside of the balconies.
Okay.
You know, one of the things I also, I've, I neglected to. It is my understanding that, that DOT has already taken a look at sequencing and timing of the lighting on Route fifty-two because of existing traffic conditions. And so my understanding that that has contributed to a mitigation of, of existing traffic issues. And that combined with the improvements that will occur with the dedication of auditory and drive and roundabout. I believe that that will ameliorate, mitigate considerably the, the traffic issues.
Do we, it, it's an interesting comment because I had made a note, Brendan, and I think this is a question for you. So that traffic circle, that's not going to remove the light at the school, right? Or is it going to remove the light at the school?
No, it's, it's not going to remove the light at the school. It, it's just going to, you know, the, the idea is just to reduce some of the through traffic. And that, that's just going back and forth from fifty-two to eighty-four. That traffic, that traffic signal would remain. And I, I think the attorney is correct. I mean, the DOT did commit to work, work on the timing of that light to make it better. Obviously, you know, where we are in the world today. The, the traffic is, is somewhat reduced there anyway right now, but you know, as that comes back online, the DOT is committed to re-timing that signal. I think the, the, the developer is also committed to extending the left turn lane into the school as far as it can to meet up with the, their proposed shorter left turn lane in, into their sidewalk for fifty-two. I think the those are the two mitigation things that the DOT was looking for.
Brendan, I had a question. Where the traffic backs, sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Amy, can you put the top view back up?
Alan?
No, the top view of the
The site plan.
Site plan. So the exit out onto Palin Road, Brendan, the left turn, isn't that a solid, you know, yellow line? Wouldn't a left turn from the exit portion of that onto Palin Road heading towards back towards Hopewell, wouldn't that be, be an illegal left turn?
Not, not for a driveway. I mean, you know, there, at, at side roads. You, you know, they'll, they'll break the yellow line. You know, the, the existence of the W L doesn't, you know, it's, it's going to be permitted. And, and the county didn't ask for any additional or modified pavement markings, but they, they, they have indicated their willingness to permit this access onto Palin Road. But, yeah, no, for a driveway, it's, it's, it's a different scenario for a driveway than it is for, you know, a public road. And again, that's just, it's just a pavement marking, you know, at, at crossroads. You know, you'll, you'll see, you know, the double yellow broken at the crossroad.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, actually, just while we're on this topic, one other comment that, that I did, that I had, a, a, a late comment. But it, it kind of relates to some of, some of the work that we've been doing in relation to other developments in the town. In that we, we, we are looking to try to get some improved at these entrances, just because the, you know, certainly they're going to be utilized in non-daylight hours. The traffic on these, both Palin Road and fifty-two are significant enough that, and, and, and even here on Palin Road where, you know, we're asking motor actually navigate across several, several lanes to take a left. We're, we're, we're requesting that the applicant modify their lighting plan to include some lighting at both, both entrances, the one on Palin and the one on fifty-two. And also for some increased lighting intensity at the crosswalk of their driveway and the crosswalks internal to their site.
Yeah, that was my next question because then lighting would become an issue if they're not, and it would have to be addressed because that that corridor is pretty dark. And I, you know, with the amount of apartments here and the amount of traffic that would enter and exit. Especially, you know, when it gets to be winter time darker earlier. That could become problematic.
Right. And looking at the site plan, I think there's a, you know, there's, there's ample opportunity to sort of shift the lighting around or you know, make them a little higher and move, move the location of lighting a little bit to accommodate that.
Okay.
And we're, we'd be pleased to work on that with you. Absolutely.
Brendan, back on the traffic pattern on fifty-two. In my experience, and, and maybe this is where the timing and the light change, we think is going to make a difference. But in my experience, when I see that traffic backed up the hill all the way up past sometimes this entrance is during school, like some school mornings. And I know we're not, we're in still a new normal phase, but when, when we're back to normal. That's where the traffic kind of queues up and it's And it's so it's queuing, queuing up in the westbound lane back toward back even sometimes past Palin Road where you wait at the light at Palin Road for a couple of switches. So do we think that those, that light re-timing is what's mitigating some of the school access, especially in the morning?
Um, well, it 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 would help. It it's just because it doesn't seem to be timed properly to to move traffic in and out. I mean, it 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 also is somewhat of an operational issue at the school where, you know, vehicles are entering and and, you know, there's a number, there's more than 200 students that are getting dropped off, you know, all within a a period of time, probably about 20 minutes. So it it it's a, you know, large thrust of traffic for a fairly short duration, really. And and the AM is is worse than the PM because the PM is is staggered out a little bit. But that's seven to seven thirty hour. And and yes, we've we've observed that even backed up beyond Palin and down Palin. You know, we're looking at it as a combination of things. We are in discussions with the school to try to find even some internal or external locations for helping their drop off situation. But the timing of the light combined with the, you know, the the bypass of of some of that through traffic. That's what we're going to look to help mitigate the the problem that John Jay.
What about, does the school have any type of traffic safety officer or anybody on duty at that particular time? Or do they have accommodation for them?
I mean, there are people, yeah, I don't know. I I'm not, I'm not sure I can, I have the 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 information to answer that question, but.
If available, the supervisor has said he would provide a, an officer during ending, entering times into the parking lot if he has one available.
Right. I mean, I think I think there are monitors inside the site. It's it's just, you know, again, it's just, it's just, a lot of it is just the the sheer amount of traffic that's showing up in such a short duration. But, you know, through observation, the the DOT is is it 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 is under the same belief that some improved timing for that particular hour of the day would would help. And then, like I said, we're 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 looking for these other other forms of mitigation to help that also.
And has DOT taken this project into consideration with regards to the timing of that light?
Stone, Rick?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, the 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 response from the DOT was in, you know, in response to 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 this application.
Okay.
They reviewed the traffic study, you know, they 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 themselves have identified the the problem or or concurred with what the problem is out there. And, you know, ba- based on the 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 amount of traffic that's generated from this project, they they didn't believe that it 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 created a significant, you know, detriment to the traffic that's out there. But obviously, there's 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 been identified problems. And, you know, the the applicant is going to do what they can do in terms of lengthening the left turn lane. Uh, and then the DOT a- as part of this project is is committed to, in the short term, working on the the timing of the lighting.
Thank you, Brendan.
Brendan, you just said that you've you've observed traffic backed up on Palin Road as well in the mornings?
Uh, to some extent, yeah. I mean, you know, you, we we we've seen traffic, again, this is like pre COVID. But, um, you know, we've we've been out there taking traffic counts at different periods of time over the last number of years. And we have observed the queue of traffic backing up beyond the left turn lane into the through lane. Uh, and, you know, through the intersection and a little bit down Palin, not not significantly, but.
I'm just wondering if traffic's backed up at Palin, how are people going to make the left out of there? That's the, that's the part of this project that's had me troubled all well.
All right.
Is backed up in the morning, how you going to make a left out of there? You got people in front of you.
Right. I think the the, you know, the answer to that, it 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 is, uh, you know, it it's a, it's a duration thing. And I think, you know, right now, certainly with the other development that's going on in the area, the the town. You know, we we've been having monthly coordination meetings with the DOT, you know, and the the other development in the town, everyone is committed, you know, solving these problems long term. So, you know, that that's why we're developing these other mitigation strategies. You know, like sort of regional strategies, not not specific to to any one particular development. So, um, you know, our 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 goal in all of that is to, is to, you know, mitigate that that queuing from John Jay so that it doesn't reach back to Palin.
Yeah, if I could just add, as far as scheduling, I mean, the town and the developers in the area, including this project are are committed to making their fair share contribution to those improvements that Brendan had described. And from a, from a timing standpoint, it's our intent to have the roundabout and a bypass road open uh, by the time that the Redtail Project is ready for their CO, which is anywhere from 18 months to two years out. So the modeling that Brendan and his associate, associate showed me today with regard to having that roundabout, the bypass road and a potential offsite drop off improvement made substantially, you know, improves is, improves the traffic in this corridor, it eliminates the queuing on Palin Road. And 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 I think while there may be some six month period of time that to your concern, Ed, might be a little problematic making that turn, uh, you know, I think we believe it's going to be short-lived.
Okay, additional questions from board members or professionals? If not, I think we're prepared to start to accept comments from the public. And before the first comment, I'd like to acknowledge and accept a letter that we received today. It's dated March 9th from Stephen Honan of the law firm of Feric Nugent McCartney, Attorneys at Law in Rockland County. Mr. Honan represents several homeowners on Round Hill Road in Hopewell Junction. And this letter will be available for anyone to view in the planning office. And is made a part of the planning board record. Michael, do we have some members of the public who wish to speak?
Okay, so if you'd like to speak, please hit the raise your hand function. If you dialed in, please hit star nine. And when you speak, please identify yourself with your name and your address. So anybody like to speak, please raise your hand now. So the first one who would like to speak is Mr. Honan, who I believe wrote the letter.
Uh, good evening. Uh, is my audio working?
Yes, yes.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Planning Board members. My name is Stephen Honan. Uh, I'm an attorney with the law offices of Feric Nugent and McCartney. We're located in South Nyack, New York. And I represent a number of the the residents on Ron Round Hill Road, which is the development that's immediately adjacent to this proposed project. Uh, as you can see, it's uh, the the cul-de-sac that's depicted on the on the photograph, where we're just the top of that, that of that rendering, which I believe would be compass direction to the north, if I'm not mistaken. You have, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for accepting my letter. It it is five pages with an addendum, so I I don't feel the need to repeat everything that's in that letter. I I'm certain that the applicant will make a response to it in due time. However, just for the the board's edification, when I reviewed this project and looked at all of the submissions by the applicant, I I really did believe that you you cannot, as a board, appreciate the impact that this development will have on the Round Hill residents. Simply because if you look at the the rendering that's before you now, although there's a a great detail of the proposed plan, there's virtually nothing with respect to the the existing improvements on Round Hill Road. And I think to make a proper evaluation of the impact that this project will have, I believe a a vicinity map should be provided with a, yes, I know that's a rendering, but I'm talking about an actual map with topographical lines to show as as many of the board members indicated, they wanted to know where the 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 homes were, where the improvements, such as the driveways, the patios, the living spaces on the the adjacent properties located. I I see a, on the last rendering that was on the screen, there's a a a parking lot that's going to be constructed right up against, I believe it's number 13 Round Hill Road. Quite frankly, I don't, I don't think there's, in order to appreciate that, you're going to have to have a a a drawing of buyer surveyor showing where the house is located, where this proposed berm is located. I I think the plan shows that a berm cannot be built in that small a area. And what the what the setback is from the improved portion of the of the parking lot to the property line. Additionally, there should be a rendering, I mean, the architectural renderings are beautiful. It's, but without a rendering from, say, 100, 200 feet up Round Hill Road, you, the board, I don't think really can appreciate the kind of impact that this development is going to have on the on the existing subdivision. What we have, I think, is essentially a 6.77 acre narrow pieces of land that is running along Route 52. Uh, I believe in our earlier application, there was a discussion of amassing of buildings. And I think that that's exactly what we're going to be having here. There's going to be a development right along Route 52. It's going to be like a wall of of a a high wall of at least three stories long across the entire frontage of 52. I think it's going to be a terrific eyesore and a and a and a stark contrast to the bucolic subdivision that's been there for many years, when juxtaposed with this, this modern building and development. And, you know, see, these renderings are 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 very nice, but it does not show what what it's going to look like with elevations from from Round Hill. Also, when I look at the renderings, such as the top drawing there, it indicates that the 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 building on the the west is going to be built up above, significantly above the grade of Route 52. It appears to be at least of maybe 10 feet above the grade of the road there. That's an estimate. I I think what we need to do is have a a topographical rendering of of what the elevations are going to be with respect to the roadway and that building with respect to its foundation. Where is its foundation going to be? Because from that foundation, the three stories are going to be built upon that. So, as I said, I don't want to restate everything that's in my letter. I believe there's been some very productive comments that were made in the prior meetings. Again, I don't want to repeat that. But I believe in order for this board to properly evaluate the impact, there's going to have to be additional submissions by this applicant showing that the this project is not going to impact upon my clients exceedingly. And quite frankly, as of right now, I think that the 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 special permit criteria have not been met by this applicant. Uh, thank you very much for your time.
Okay, so the next speaker is going to be Ms. Janine Iraussi.
Okay, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Sure. This is Ron Iraussi. We live on Palin Road on the corner of 82. And I have two comments. One is, we have, we're talking about Amazon, we're talking about, and we just approved 84. 84 units on 82. So I anticipate, well, these are done, I'll never be able to get out of my driveway again. I think everything's been done by the book here, but I think you need to really sit here and watch the traffic that comes through Palin Road. We see it every single day. The other thing I want to comment is something that Lori G said. It was very nice of her to bring up the style of the architecture and being very politically correct. I don't have to be politically correct. I voted for Trump. And I will tell you, that's the ugliest building I have ever seen in my life. It looks like a warehouse slash prison, and you're putting it next to these beautiful homes right behind you. Why couldn't it look more aesthetic to that area and not look like some warehouse? I don't need a comment back. I just wanted to let you know how we feel. So thank you very much.
Okay, is, um, anybody else like to speak? Please raise your hand. We have no other speakers at this time. Okay. Well, thank you. Richard and Amy, is it possible for you to be able to satisfy Mr. Honan's request for some additional depictions of the project?
Yeah, we could accommodate that. I just want to point out again that this is an as a very development. We're not asking for anything that would require zoning variance, so.
Yeah, I think the point is that, and as as I stated previously, we we believe that, and we know that dimensionally, in terms of your code and what was required of us, we meet or exceed all of the requirements insofar as architectural style. You know, that's, that's a beauties in the eye of the beholder and and we recognize and respect people's opinions. But that's something that the Advisory Architectural Review Board has already looked at. And perhaps, you know, they made a decision based upon their opinion. Insofar as providing some additional perspective from Round Hill Road. If the planning board wishes us to do that, we can do it. I would just suggest that, you know, in terms of 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 visual analysis, clearly, that's a, that's within the purview of the planning board. But insofar as the views, you know, we could do it from from Round Hill Road, which is a public thoroughfare, and we could take some photographs or take a look at the elevations off of 52 to answer that question as well. But I'm not so sure there's much more we can do in that regard. As far as the the screening, we we really have endeavored to be as responsive as we possibly can by virtue of of the landscaping and and the placement of everything. But that's where we are, so.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board? Would, do we want to invite Amy to come back with some additional things showing screening, TOPOs? And some of the sightlines?
Uh, yeah, John, I I'm sorry, yes. And I wonder whether in the letter from, I apologize, I didn't catch the gentleman's name, was the attorney for the Round Hill residents. Was there anything else that was requested in that letter that's an issue that we should should be requesting information from the applicant?
We we would certainly share that letter with with Amy and Richard so that we made made sure that everything was addressed in that letter, yes.
Okay. So assuming there's some additional comment to be to be made there, I I would agree with the additional renderings. Or, um, and I don't, I don't know, Michelle, whether this is feasible. Is there a way to kind of mark the height of the building somehow? For us, if we wanted to do a site visit, actually just go kind of stand on the road and kind of see what that view would look like? I know sometimes you can like float a balloon or something up. I don't know. I I know we did that for some other very large projects. I don't know that this is feasible there. I just asked the question.
I I mean, I think it's possible. I'm, I've not, I don't know that I've seen it done for a building, usually sent for like a cell tower. But I don't know if anyone else has any experience with that that can answer that question. But I I've never seen it done for a building of this this height.
It's, it's what, about 35 or 40 feet? Is that, was that roughly right? Three stories?
It's three stories, yeah. And it's, I can.
I'm not, I'm not sure if floating a balloon is necessarily going to show us much, but I think that you could simulate a rendering showing what things are going to look like from both sides, perhaps, yes?
Yes, we can. We can do that. I mean.
Yes, we can. We can do that. I mean, we've done it a couple of different ways. We have this one. We have it from, this is the west view, so that is looking at it from Palin Road. Granted, you, there's no frame of reference from the actual, or from a Round Hill. Um, I mean, we can modify these, but.
Yeah, so maybe, Amy, that, maybe that's it. Maybe just further back on round, like, like go back out so we can get kind of a sense of the scale, if that makes sense.
You're saying Lori is saying from Round Hill to have a view shot? Is that what you're requesting?
Yeah, maybe one or two driveways back on, on Round Hill from, from the center of the road, looking towards these buildings, towards fifty-two.
You're saying like through that cul-de-sac?
Yes.
Yeah.
So maybe like from this vantage point. So from here, looking back.
Right.
Well, one thing, though, it really wouldn't show is if we, you know, because the grade on the right side, as we're, you know, looking at this plan now, if we go to the right back, that grade really goes up tremendously.
Here, yes, it does.
I mean, what would you say, Amy? It's like at least twenty, thirty feet higher.
At least. I can, uh, let me pull up the drainage map. It'll show.
Appreciate you have all these documents ready to go, Amy. It's, I, I like being able to pull.
I almost did. I almost had this one.
No, I'm serious. I mean. There, there's, there's positives and negatives to everything. We like being in person, but having the access to documents like this and you being able to pull them up is really helpful.
Don't compliment me yet. This is all the stuff you missed out on, the SWIP report. Here we go. Hey, one second. Okay. So now we're talking about this house here. And this actual location is from the proposed subdivision plan. So I don't know that that's exactly where the house is constructed. But you're at a, an elevation of two eighty here. And we're at an elevation of two forty-six here where the proposed pond's going. Where the infiltration basin's going, so.
What's the, what's the, what's the elevation of the top of the building? The new building?
It's got to be like, what, thirty-five feet?
To say it's thirty-five feet high. It's floor elevation, sorry. First floor elevation's two fifty-four.
So probably what about?
Two eighty-nine, is that, is that about the elevation of?
So the top of the building is at roughly the same height as the foundation of the house, give or take a, a few feet.
Yeah, the grade, the, the bottom grade.
Right.
It could be. Again, I'm not sure if the house is actually constructed in this location.
But it's similar.
A sense of the elevation, it's. I still think maybe up one or two driveways on Round Hill and a view looking forward to fifty-two, because the low side looks like it's very, it's fairly a plateau. I don't see a lot of gradient lines there.
Sorry.
I'm trying to, to define how we can be most responsive. And so I, I think what I'm hearing is sort of a view shed analysis from up Round Hill Road, perhaps to the, as we look at this plan here, from where the second driveway up from the cul-de-sac on the left in that vicinity, is that, is that a fair request? Is that what you're looking for?
That would give us a good sense of how much of these buildings with all of the additional landscaping that Amy's showing us tonight, how much of these buildings would actually be visible.
So I think.
Go ahead, Amy. I'm sorry.
I think going back like a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet is probably adequate. No?
Where are you, where are you pointing? Just, I'm sorry.
So if we, if we took it from somewhere in here, which is basically in between the first house and the second house on the side?
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. I don't know, Richard, I, I think, because I'm most concerned about the, the, the lower, I'm going to call it the lower side of the road, that's more plateau level. They're going to have a different view.
So if we, I, I just want to make sure, this is what, let me ask, what I'm, what I'm trying to do is I, we want to be responsive. I want to make sure we give you what you want by way of a view shed analysis so that we, we identify the locations. My fervent hope here is that I could close the public hearing. I will give you the view shed analysis that you want, and that will provide you with all of the information you have. I mean, the record is, is, we've got hundreds of pages of studies. And I, and I recognize and respect the, the board's position. But this is the plan as proposed, and I don't know whether we can shrink the building. I don't think we can.
I'm not suggesting you shrink the building. What I'm suggesting is you've proposed tonight new landscaping plans that will provide better screening to the residents of the subdivision. So we're saying, in order to be able to understand what that will look like, if you can give us the view from back in that subdivision, looking towards the property, so we can see what that screening is actually doing to shelter those views, it would be very, it would be helpful.
That's fine, and, and we.
And I appreciate, I appreciate that you're proposing the additional screening. We've talked about, do we stagger the trees or not? It's just that all of these views are, are not really from the view of the, the neighborhood. They're kind of from the side or from, from above.
Okay, all right. And I, I think we can, Amy, I think that's a, an analysis that we could do. Could we, with respect to the plantings we're proposing, as well as from that particular point of view on Round Hill Road?
Yes, I think we can provide that.
Yeah, and if that's what you want, that's what we'll get.
Okay.
I have, I do have pictures from Round Hill, but there's nothing, there's no frame of reference for the building. Yeah, so I mean, I'll, I'll pull them up now if you want.
And, Mr. Chairman, we have two other people would like to speak as well. Raise their hands in the interim.
Okay, that'd be fine.
So, I, I think for now, maybe I'll allow these two speakers to speak in case there are other questions that Mr. O'Rourke or Ms. Mombardi area have to answer.
Okay.
Okay, so allowing somebody with the name, okay.
Hello?
Yes.
This is Patrick Rouge. I live at thirty Round Hill Road. And I would have direct line of sight with no tree coverage at all into the, what is that, the west side building? I live three houses down on the northern front, on the Palin side. And there, there is no tree coverage at all. I would look directly through the cul-de-sac at the, that one of the buildings. That means all their lights, all their headlights, all their traffic lights that they're going to have, or their, their lamp posts, they will be directly visible from my bedroom window. I really would love it if something could be included to mitigate that for me. Because I know we are worried about the people right next to the development, but light travels pretty far. And there's nothing that takes my house into consideration.
What number did you say you were at?
Thirty.
Thirty? We'll definitely take a look at that. Yeah.
And by all means, you could come on over, we could talk, and you could look from my driveway and, and see that it is a direct line of sight with nothing that would stop it.
Um, does anybody have your email? Can I give you my email?
Yes, ma'am.
And you can contact me. Okay. You ready?
Yes.
It's amy B at daystokosa, D-A-Y-S-T-O-K-O-S-A-E-N-G.com.
Thank you, ma'am.
You got it.
Now, Lori, I just had a question. When you said you were looking for that viewpoint from the picture that basically it looked like Amy showed, but are you looking for it to have the rendering of the plantings?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, as they expect it to be planted.
Okay, that, I just wanted to make that clear, because that's what I figured, so that we could see it as, you know, almost a finished product.
Right.
That was my understanding as well.
That's basically the, the viewpoint you want, right?
And inclusive of the berm, because that would be, you know, pretty, I mean, I don't know, does that berm end up being four feet, five feet? You know, because if you have a fourteen-foot planting, you know, and let's say a six-foot berm, you know, it's a twenty-foot start height. And the arborvitae, you know, slash green giant does grow at a pretty reasonable pace. And it is probably the best planting to be put there when you are looking for a barrier. So you've chosen, in my opinion, probably the best planting that you could have put there.
Okay, Michael, are there additional members of the public to speak?
Yes, um, there's somebody named the Cokes eighty-eight or the Kochs eighty-eight. I'll allow that person to speak. Okay. Okay, um, you're allowed to speak now.
Hello, uh, there was some talk tonight about maybe closing the public hearing. While you're aware of, I'm sure you are all aware of it, that it is, if you close the public hearing, no more information can be given by the applicant. Because the public will not have an opportunity to speak on it. It's against the open meeting laws. It's against New York state law. Once that public hearing is closed, you cannot receive any further information. And the board should not consider any further information once the public hearing is closed, because you are eliminating the public's right to speak against that information or for that information.
So perhaps I can respond to the gentleman. It was my intention to adjourn the public hearing for this evening, extend it to our next meeting so we can consider the information that we've requested from Amy.
Okay, thank you. But there, other people did mention about closing the public hearing tonight requesting.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public, Michael? That's it. Okay. I think, and Michelle, maybe you can help guide me a little bit. I think we do want, obviously, to adjourn the public hearing for this evening and, and take this up again. Do we have room on the March thirtieth agenda if Amy's able to produce everything within that timeframe?
Yes, we do.
Okay, Amy, will that work for you?
It will.
Okay, wonderful. I think that'd be great to keep it on a short timeline. So I'll accept a motion to adjourn the public hearing for this evening. And Richard's second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Is there any other business to be brought before the planning board for this evening?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks.
If there's nothing else, I'll accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, everybody. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We'll see everyone on the thirtieth.
Good night, everyone.
Bye. Bye-bye.